Welcome to the City Council's special meeting. I'm calling this to order, and the time is now four o'clock. Can we please take roll call?
Councilmember Gama. Councilmember Hernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Perez.
Here.
Mayor Protem Martinez.
President.
And Mayor Marquez, I mean, sorry, Mayor Brolin.
Here. We will now hear written public comments. Those wishing to make comments in person or on Zoom will be taken during the item you wish to speak on. Comments from the participating on Zoom, we'd like to ask you to use your raise hand feature so that we can call on you during the appropriate time. Staff will unmute your mic, and you will have three minutes to provide comments. Madam Clerk, do we have any written public comments at this time?
We have two written public comments. And the first one is from Rick Holdenon, and he says, currently, I see many dog owners, including myself, using the Bubbling Springs Park area located nearest the library and Parks and Rec building to play with our dogs. This location has trees for shade, a large enough area with the existing parking. I believe this location would be a good fit for the reasons mentioned above, especially because of the existing parking the city wouldn't need to build a parking lot and could save on some expenses. And that would be in relation to item number two. And he wrote a second comment in regards to item number one, which is, City Council has a great opportunity to enhance the leadership and public safety with the hiring of a new police chief. I am encouraging the council to look for a police chief whose priorities are first and foremost, public safety, and consider eliminating other responsibilities such as event planning and cannabis business growth from the future police chief's tasks. In the last eight years, I have noticed an increase in violent crimes, and within this period, two children have been shot and killed on the street I live and grew up on. One of these murders was on Father's Day in broad daylight, and the victim was only 15 years old. I live two blocks from the police station, which by location, someone would presume is safe. In the past 35 years of living here, public safety has deteriorated recently, when previously safety wasn't as much a concern. Three years ago, in the summer of 2019, my then 10-year-old son was attacked by an obviously mentally ill transient at the beach while leaving junior lifeguards. You may recall the incident because a dog was kicked during this outburst, and other children were threatened on a busy summer day. How can we expect families and visitors to enjoy our beach when events such as this occur? Many of the transients I noticed in town appear to be drug users, mentally unstable. Earlier this year, the police department presented a report on crime from 2018 through 2021, and that report property crimes had decreased by just under 12% from 2019 through 2021, and many imploded the results. However, in the same report, violent crimes had increased by 144% from 2019 through 2021. Aggravated assault increased by 183%, and murders increased by 200% from 2019 through 2021. When I think of public safety, I think of protecting my children, my neighbors' children, and the kids playing at the beach from physical harm. I recognize the reduction of crimes such as shoplifting, however, in my opinion, that is trivial when we have violent crimes increasing. I included the Port Wainimi uniform crime report in the public comment where you can see that in the past three years, violent crimes have nearly doubled. I think with the new police chief who puts public safety as a top priority, we can do better as a community to make this a safer place to raise children. Thank you, Ricardo Holden. And that concludes the written public comments.
Thank you. So now we're going to be moving into the business items. I will now turn it over to the city manager to discuss our first item, which is the recruitment of the chief of police.
Thank you, Mayor. Honorable City Council, I'd like to introduce you to Mr. Joel Bryden, who is liaison for Bob Marion Associates as part of our due diligence in seeking, selecting, and then hiring the most appropriate police chief. Mr. Bryden is going to go through the process that they have proven to be successful as part of their operating and continuously improving method to make the right fit for cities to hire police chiefs and other government senior executives. And this also allows the community and council to provide input to him and how to identify the best-fit metrics that you think and they think are appropriate. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Bryden. Yeah, you should have an on button there, and Mr. Preetz will lend assistance.
Okay, all right, operator error on my part. Well, good afternoon, and thank you, Brick, and thank you, City Council, for having me here today. Like he said, Joel Bryden from Bob Marion Associates. I have been working for Bob Marion Associates as a public sector executive recruiting firm for the last nine years. The firm's been in existence for a little over 20 years. I've, during that nine-year period, I've worked part-time for Bob Marion, completed over 130 recruitments, more than half in public safety. The, I think I'm up to 47 chiefs of police, 34 of which have been from municipalities. My work history prior to working for Bob Marion Associates, I was in law enforcement for 33 years. I spent the first 28 years as a member of the San Diego Police Department, started there as a recruit right out of college, and left as an assistant chief in 2008. And the reason I left in 2008 was to become the police chief in the city of Walnut Creek in the Bay Area where I currently live still. I was there for five years and retired, and then Bob Marion found me in line at Costco about three months later and made me an offer I couldn't refuse, part-time out of my house, before out of your house was the norm. And I've been doing that ever since. So what I'd like to do is talk about the process that we use, and then I think what the most important part of today is, for me being here, is getting your input, getting the community's input, but also the city council's input, what the characteristics you're looking for in your next police chief. I think that's a very important part. We have two weeks until the application period closes, and I can tell you that as of last night, we had 16 applicants for the job, so I'd anticipate having more than 20 by the time the 16th of November gets here in two weeks. So I'd like to go over the timeline, and I believe the council members were provided this, but I just want to explain some of the steps. We had a kickoff meeting, we started this with Brick and his staff on the 22nd of September over Zoom, and our office staff, based on input from the city, put together a recruitment brochure, what we also call candidate profile. The city approved that, and then we did ad placement, and I'm still currently doing outreach, but we did ad placement about a week or two after, about around the 1st of October, we placed ads, and you're probably wondering where we advertise. So for a police chief recruitment, we'll advertise with the International Association Chiefs of Police, California Police Chiefs Association, PERF, which is a police executive research forum, also advertise with Noble, which is a national organization of black law enforcement executives, HAPCOA, Hispanic American Police Command Officers Association, NOLI, which is a national association of women law enforcement executives, also advertise with like Western Cities and the Middle Management Association of Northern and Southern California, those are free ads, that's why we advertise there, but I think it's fairly effective. And then what I do is I go and I look for candidates that I think would be good fits, based on people I know, recruitments I've done, that where I've had good candidates in a recruitment prior to this, that they either got the job several years ago, because it wouldn't be ethical for me to go, you know, place a police chief in Port Wainimi, and then nine months later, doing another recruitment somewhere else and try to steal your police chief. We don't do that. We wait at least three years to talk to someone if they've been at a job that we placed them in. So we did that, ad placement and outreach, and then the recruitment closes on the 26th, or the 16th, I'm sorry, of November, and right after that, what I do is I go through the, all the resumes with a fine-tooth comb, meaning that I study all of them, I look at their cover letters, I look at their resumes, and I look, one, for what the city's looking for, and two, to make sure that they're qualified. And you probably ask, well, what are some of the things that I look for? Well, I want someone with a well-rounded background, someone who's not just worked in the field as a patrol, as a member of the patrol their whole career, even though that's very important. It's also important to have investigative experiences, also important to have administrative experience. It's really important to understand how a computer-aided dispatch record system gets put into a police department, and how important that is for the whole operation to work. And if someone has experience doing that at their agency they're currently at, that's very good experience to be a police chief, just like it is to have handled major incidents, to handle marches, to handle special events, to handle anything. All those things are really important. So I look for well-rounded experiences, the bottom line. Also look for what I've heard, what direction I've been given by the city manager as to what experience we're looking for. The beauty of using a recruiting firm, whether it's us or someone else, is that we don't have a dog in this fight. We don't care who gets hired. What we care is to find very good candidates, so the city manager has, and the city has a number of different great candidates to pick from, and they can say, we get down to finalists, and there are three finalists, that A, B, or C could be our next police chief, now who's the best fit? Because when we get to a point in that, that part of the process, any of them are really well-qualified to be your police chief, but who's the best fit for Port Wainimi? So we do that, and then after I review the resumes, I select what I believe to be the best group of candidates to interview, and I do a preliminary interview over Zoom with them, and I assume certain questions that are related to Port Wainimi, but I also ask them questions about their experience and what they know and what they've done, and how long were they in the field? Are they only, you know, if they put that they're the commander of an area station in San Diego like I was, a captain, how long were they there? Were they there for six months, were they there for four or five years? How long did they work in investigations, and what jobs did they do in investigations? I get into those details with them so I can learn about their background. But really, I like to have a conversation with them to get, kind of know, to get their people skills, because your police chief needs good communication skills, not just in writing, but verbally especially, and they need to be able to engage people of all types. So I get into that stuff, and then on the 5th of December, I will meet with the city manager and his staff, and I'll go over the entire list. He'll see who's applied, he'll see who I interviewed, and he'll see who I'm recommending. Totally up to him to decide who gets selected. I have no preconceived notions or any information as to a certain person or persons should be selected, which is why you use a recruiter, you use it so it's a very fair process and it's unbiased, and I'm picking the person who I think is the best fit based on all the information I've been given. So we'll have that meeting, and then the city manager will decide who's coming for panel interviews, and those panel interviews are going to be on the 14th of December, and then at the end of that day, we'll debrief the different panels, and Brick will listen to their input, and at the end of that day, he will decide who the finalists are going to be. Ideally, for panel interviews, we would bring in six candidates, and then at the end of that day, probably whittle it down to two or three, depending on the feedback from the interview panels, and then have Brick interview them and do whatever process he wants to do the very next day, keep them in town if they're here, especially if they've had to travel a distance to get here. After those final interviews, the panel interviews, if we get down to two or three finalists, and our office staff will do a reference, any limited background check, electronic background check on a candidate, and if the candidate comes from outside the current police department in Port Wainimi, then he or she has to go through a whole post-background process, just like every police officer, when they change jobs or they get hired to begin with, you go through the whole post-background process, which is not only a background investigation by a certified investigator by the state, but also a psychological examination and a medical examination, make sure they're fit for duty psychologically and physically. And then Mr. Connors decides who's going to get the job, and then we give them a start date once they get through the background process.
So I guess at this point, we take the questions from our council first before we hear the public comments, am I correct, city clerk?
Yes, unless, yeah.
Yeah, that's probably the way. So I'm going to open it up for questions from our council, councilperson Gama.
I don't really have a, well, I have a couple of questions, but I just want to get on the record that the five of us are the representatives of the city, and I would have hoped that you would have contacted us individually first to get to know our city. I've heard a lot about you, but I didn't hear much about our city from you. So my question is, how, what do you know about the city of Port Wainimi?
What do I know?
Yes, sir.
Not a whole lot.
Okay.
Other than what I've learned through the brochure and speaking with Brick.
Have you toured our city? Have you got to know our city? Have you visited our shopping malls, our beach?
No.
No?
No.
Wouldn't you think that would be a good idea?
Ideally, yes.
Yeah.
If I had the opportunity to do that, yeah.
Okay, so I just want to get on the record that it's nice to be meeting with the council right now. We are the five representatives of the city, but I wish we would have been able to meet with you early on to let you know what, as a representative of the city, what we feel we're looking for in a police chief, because frankly, the city manager is not living in our city, and he's not a part of our city other than being an employee of the city. So I'm just a little concerned that that wasn't happening, and here we are with the process already moving along with candidates and the like. So you mentioned that you've done 130 recruitments, were they all for police chiefs?
No, over half were in public safety, meaning fire or police.
And how many police chiefs have you recruited for?
Forty-seven or forty-eight. I don't remember the exact number, 34 of which, though, is an exact number of municipal police chiefs.
And was it your practice to get to know the city first, or the city council, or did you have a meeting with council members like I've asked?
A lot of times I did, yes.
But you didn't have one here?
No, I did not.
Okay.
That could be part of the process as we continue on, though, before we move forward.
Absolutely, yeah, I've already spoken with one of the council members today.
Okay, I have no comments, further comments? Did you think it a good idea to reach out to the Police Officers Union?
Yes, I did.
Did you speak with the individual police officers to find out what they're looking for in a new chief?
Not yet, but I made that offer when we first started.
All right, thank you.
So, yes, so I don't have any questions. We did speak today, and I let you know what was important to me, and I made, I impressed on you the importance of reaching out to our Police Officer Association president and any members of the police department, if that's possible, because I think that is the most important agency or group of people that are going to be affected most by this, is who their leader is. And from a council perspective, I would like to see someone with a local background. I understand you're doing national, but I would like to see someone who's local, who has an understanding of Ventura County, who has relationships with the area police chiefs associations, and who understands a bit about this county, and if they have any special understanding about our community. We're a small town, if they have any background in small towns. It's, as you know, it's different than a big city, and somebody that has that ability to transition into a small city is important. I believe it's also important to get to know the community. We're very unique in Wainimi, and we're very close-knit, our community has a high approval of our police department, so their opinion also matters, and who their representative is going to be. As someone that can, as I explained to you today, someone that has the ability to bring together the department as a whole, as someone that's approachable but can make tough decisions and has no problem in making tough decisions, and somebody that can make decisive decisions, but at the same time, is someone that anybody in the department can approach and have a good relationship with and be respectful, and bring together the department instead of creating a division, is what's important to me.
Yes, I don't have any questions, but I did want to reemphasize what our other two council members were mentioning, because it's the first thing that I have written down, is a leader that knows and understands our community. Additionally, it's a person that has a kind heart but can also be tough so that people can listen and carry out their orders, somebody that is also willing to think outside the box and carry out new systems that maybe other people would be scared of trying out so that we can improve the quality of life for all of our residents and visitors to our friendly city. Some of those examples, or areas of examples of thinking would be like in education, maybe educating our residents what's going on with the city, maybe tackling different systems for homelessness, and I'm also thinking maybe a way for local students to get involved, somebody that's not afraid of, you know, opening that box, and somebody that's also going to continue to have our police department really close to the community, because I think our community feels that we're pretty close with our police. Thank you.
A lot of good points have been made to this point, so I'll just touch on a couple of them. When you're doing your outreach, which was brought up earlier, what is the umbrella of outreach that you do, or do you do it state, to this point, have you done it state, locally, regionally? What, how big of a span have you reached out so far?
For this recruitment in particular, well, anyone can apply. I mean, we actually have an applicant that applied from South Africa, they're not eligible because they don't have the required standards that we do here in California and the United States, but most of the, most applicants will be from California. We will have several people from out of state, in my opinion. The further west you get in this country, the more professional law enforcement is, so people from out of state have a little higher hurdle to get over to get into our state with me and with most, most law enforcement recruiters. But it's a, it's a national search, as councilmember Perez stated, but it's mostly related to California.
One of the key parts of the recruitment is like the oral board that you choose to kind of like filter out the top. What methodology, or how have you, or how do you see that oral board makeup and who would be involved in it?
Well, and that's, that's where we get community involvement and police officer involvement. Usually, I recommend to city managers three different panels, they want to, I'll call a professional panel to start with, or a subject matter expert panel of local area police chiefs, maybe someone from the district attorney's office, and the other panel would be members of the community selected by the city manager that are good to evaluate candidates when we get down to panel interviews. And then the third one would be city employees, maybe some department heads. I always recommend that there's labor representative on that panel, meaning the Police Officers Association president, or a representative of that organization, and maybe a civilian employee of the department as well. So that's the gamut of the panel interviews.
And I'm sure you're going to be, from the community input, you're going to be getting more, some of the things that have, like, you know, over the last four years have approached me as some major concerns within the community, as someone who has experience dealing with. is someone who has experience dealing with the homeless dilemma within our community, actually within our region, how they can not only deal with it from a law enforcement standpoint, but also from a social standpoint, finding the best solutions depending on the individual situation. Another thing has been traffic seems to be a continuing theme within the community as far as like the effective ways to kind of calm the traffic. And that's been an effect. And then finally, while we have a very good youth engagement now with our explorers, the concept of reaching out into the community and dealing with youth before they get into trouble. Sort of more community outreach so that you can develop a good relationship. So, I mean, those are things that, and then one thing, it's been touched on earlier with the, with that fact that we're a small community. I like it, we have some really kind of boutique-type outreach with the seniors that are disabled, being able to get out and see that they're okay. And then also neighborhood watches seem to be a big desire from a lot of the various different communities. So those are key things as we move through the process. Does any other councilman have? Laura, I'm sorry, I can see your hand raised, I'm sorry. So councilperson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And may I have the gentleman's name who's speaking? I can't see him on my screen at all.
Joel Bryden.
Joel, hi. Thank you for your presentation, Joel. It's much appreciated. And adding the process. And I think what you're presenting to us is very typical of a search and recruitment and hiring process that is familiar to at least me or my years of local government. It's quite typical. And we all know that our city manager was hired to be responsible for hiring our partners, including our police chief. So I don't necessarily agree the fact that he lives out of town has any bearing on his ability to hire our next chief of police, which by law is his authority. I do, would like to just offer a few parameters or thoughts about characteristics that I would like to see in our next chief of police. I do agree that with our mayor, that we need a chief of police who's going to support the Neighborhood Watch program or somebody who can implement a program like Neighborhood Watch. I have, in my HOA, we have an officer come regularly to talk to our board and to talk to our residents. And we've been doing this for many years, except through COVID. And we find it very helpful in informing residents of things to be prepared for, things to do, not to do. And what I'm hoping with a new police chief is that we can get this new police chief to recognize the public education portion of law enforcement and addressing how to help the homeless, how to curb speeding, by working with the groups that are usually fall victim to this or are sometimes perpetrating a kind of activity. For instance, I'd like to see a police chief who can work with the car clubs. We have graffiti problems. We need a police chief that will work with the taggers out there and find, perhaps even find a space where they can express themselves artistically in the city. So sometimes groups that are considered marginal to society, marginal to following the rules of our, of our state, following the ordinances. And we need a new way of embracing them and bringing them into the fold so that we can gain more of their cooperation when it comes to graffiti, when it comes to speeding, when it comes to fireworks. We need to find, we need a police chief who can think creatively in addressing those issues. I think the technical ability of a police chief is very important as we move into this 21st century policing. Understanding the technology behind dispatch center, behind an emergency operations center, the dispatch to car communications. All of that is very important, I think, in a chief of police that he have an understanding of those technical requirements for performing those essential functions. And then I'd like a police chief to us also who would consider growing and developing special units within the police force such as K-9, maybe SWAT. You know, we're not big enough to do that right now, but maybe a police chief who can look at and prepare us for those kinds of, that kind of growth in our police department. Certainly, good communication skills are important. Somebody who's very approachable, who can work in the community. I would like to see our chief of police be bilingual in Spanish. Not necessarily a requirement, but maybe a desirable characteristic would be that he speaks Spanish. Because over 60% Latino in Huinimi. And I think that it's really important that our chief of police be able to communicate with our Spanish-speaking population. Public information, again, is important. Somebody who can support a solid public information program that gets messages out to our community through our HOAs, through our businesses, working with the base, working with the port. Buddy on how to behave, how to be, such as feed the homeless. Fireworks are bad, you know, they're dangerous. So we really need a strong public information campaign and a chief to support that. Let's see, what else did I have here? Emergency manage, I'm partial to emergency management because I was an emergency over there. I think the city needs to make sure that we are all in a state of readiness for a major disaster.
Councilperson, you're going in and out periodically, so.
May that happen and us to fall on our faces unless we're prepared. Okay, okay, so the last, the last area of support that I'd like to see the.
The screen has gone blank here for some reason. So maybe, maybe we can give councilperson Hernandez a time to speak later on. Maybe we can get into public comments on this area now. Oh, she's back. Okay. Maybe.
Okay, I'm done. Did you guys catch the last part of that?
No. Well, I don't know, it depends what the last part was. It probably the last minute or so, perhaps not.
Okay, oh, okay, so the last part of that was emergency management. A chief of police who understands his role as the assistant director of emergency management. We need somebody to take that role seriously and ensure that.
Okay. Thank you.
That are required into that field.
Okay, thank you. So can we now move into public comments in this area?
Tamafig. Mayor, council members, thank you. Councilmember Gama, thank you so much for pointing out that there's no council engagement or community understanding. That's huge. Considering that we have a city manager that's on his way out the door, I don't believe that the city manager should have full authority to hire, especially with the new council coming in. The mere fact that you weren't included in that bothers me very much. Also, word on the street is that there was a council member who's not present and the police chief have already been courting a specific candidate. That also concerns me. And like I said, I think that this should be a council. It's not by law that says that the city manager has the exclusive right to hire. I think that the council needs to weigh in on this issue. This is crucial. Where I agree with most everything that everybody has said, I don't have any disagreements. Mainly, what I would like to see in a police chief is somebody that doesn't have political aspirations. I started my career with the city at the police department. I've worked for several chiefs at a time when everybody liked each other. That's not the case nowadays. So it's very, very important. And when I say political aspirations, they should want to stay in this city and make their career, not looking for the next big move. That's huge. Certainly, they need to not have ties with the marijuana industry. Rumor on the street, and you don't listen to it. And perception, which we all know perception has a lot to play, is that our police chief is too entrenched in marijuana. Their business is no different than anybody else's, but the presence is not with other businesses. So they need to make sure that they're fair and equal treatment with all businesses in the city. I did like the community-based policing, the homelessness. We are a small city. We are different. And I know every city says that we're special, but you know what? We are special. And so we need somebody that understands that and certainly, you know, can work with other community leaders with our homeless issue with, you know, again. And I like the community-based policing. At one time, we used to have Neighborhood Watch when we had somebody in here that handled that. Well, that went by the wayside. And that's something that I've heard a lot of from community is that, you know, we don't know what's going on. We have nobody, you know, none of the beat guys come out. And it's not the police department's fault, but we need to start getting that back again. Also, somebody, a police chief, needs to understand budget constraints, that they can't just ask for the moon from the council and expect that they're going to get it. There are already, you know, the police department already has a high budget. And I'm not talking about, you know, patrol officers, not things that are necessary. But you can't just ask for stuff and throw it against the wall and hope it's going to stick. We have a budget in the city that you have to keep to. And the police chief should be well aware of what a budget is and how to respectfully ask for things that are necessary. And I think that's probably about it. I, you know, and I mentioned this to a couple of the council people. Like I said, having been here and, you know, worked through numerous police chiefs myself, I do have a little bit of an understanding. I do like the idea of the boards, and I was going to bring that up. So I'm glad that you did do that with the community-based. I think that the school district, Christine Walker, needs to be on there because the, you know, the school districts obviously have a very important role to play with the local police department. So that would probably be my wishlist and then my not wishlist. So, thank you.
Does anyone else have a comment for the police chief? Okay, councilmember Hernandez has a raised hand. I don't know if that was from before.
Yeah, it was me. I was just having trouble hearing the previous speaker. I don't know if it was from my end or it was on the other end. But are we, I guess since we're not taking any more public comment, I was just wondering if we're holding to the three-minute.
Yes.
Comment period. Okay, all right, thank you.
I just had one comment of the process so far. This is a very important job that's going to affect our community for a number of years. And I'm disappointed, I guess, of the public input right now as far as like what they want to see in a chief. And maybe it's the time, the location, whatever it may be. But obviously, we've all been talking to various different community members and it's of prime importance to get the best chief. So perhaps staff can look into various different ways to get the word out so that we can get some more public comments, so that we get a more robust idea of where the community is on this.
We do have the option to do a community survey and I'll let Joel speak to that if you would like.
I was going to offer my email address in public here. So anyone in the community want to email me with input, just like she just had, then that'd be fine. And it's Joel, J-O-E-L, and then first initial my last name. So joelb@bobmurrayassoc, so B-O-B-M-U-R-R-A-Y-A-S-S-O-C dot com. And I'm happy to read and take into consideration any of that, any information.
I was going to say as a follow-up, if there's a way that perhaps through our public information or something, we can kind of figure out various different mediums to reach out to the people. I'll leave it up to the staff as to the best possible ideas. But I know I've gotten a few comments, people telling me it was kind of, I'm not sure whose responsibility it is, but it was a little bit last minute so that people didn't really have the opportunity to kind of get their act together to come out here. Plus, it's four o'clock and it's a working community. So probably a lot of people don't have that opportunity. So if there's a way, I don't know, through public medium, which I'm not an expert at, but hopefully our public information is, so. Yes.
So, yeah, I'd like to reiterate the more public knowledge. Not many people knew about this. We had very little time to advertise. And there were some important groups that needed to be here that should have a say. For instance, our POA president and any other members of the community, any leaders. I thought the port was supposed to be here. Several agencies that I thought were supposed to be involved in this process that I don't know if they received notice of it. So I'm not sure what we can do to engage them.
Well, I know I'm not concerned so much that we rushed through. I'd rather do a more comprehensive approach to kind of getting that input so that not only do we feel comfortable, but the community feels comfortable that we've reached out to them.
Mayor Rollins, ma'am?
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, for me, the biggest priority is getting somebody that's community-minded and understands our community. And we have a very complex community. We have the Navy, we have the port, we have a city right across our border. I mean, Huinimi High School is technically all it is, in the city of Oxnard. And so my desire would be that we pound the pavement and try to find somebody that has that local understanding, somebody that may have grown up in the area, somebody that is intimately familiar with our city so that they don't have to go through a learning curve in order to understand where the boundary of the city of Huinimi and Oxnard is. And these are like little minor things, but it is kind of confusing when you first come here. And so I recognize that you're well on your way. You have 16 candidates. You have two weeks more for the, till it closes. And anybody out there who hasn't applied yet, who fits and meets the criteria that we're speaking of from here on the dais, we strongly encourage you to apply and make yourself available for this wonderful opportunity in a wonderful city. Thank you.
What is usually a good-sized pool before you kind of move forward? Is 16 high, low, in between?
It's about medium right now. Now, if this were before the pandemic, I'd say we'd have 25 to 30. But after the pandemic, the numbers have been lower. The quality has not been lower, but the numbers have been lower. So 16 is a good number, but I expect to get more. I've been on the phone and emailing with several people and I expect to get some more applicants.
Okay. Hey, does anybody in the audience want to make a comment? Otherwise, we will move on to the next topic. I didn't keep time, but if you give a short comment, go for it.
I don't think that Spanish-speaking should be a requirement because then you're going to get a lot of people that may not do it. I think the environment may be it, but I wouldn't exclude anybody on that.
Okay.
I can't hear.
Okay. Okay, if I'm trying to recap what she said, she felt, Tamafig felt that being Spanish-speaking, it should not be a primary requirement. It may be a desirable one or one that would be good, but it should not be used as a means to take people out of the poll.
Thank you, Mayor.
I have one question before we close this out. Is it possible, or could it be possible, to extend the deadline and in order to get more community and council involvement? Is that a possibility? Because I do really feel like there are some things that we may be able to do to bring this.
bring this more of a community decision, because right now I kind of feel like it's two people's decision, rightly or wrongly, but it just kind of feels that way.
Yeah, we can shift the timeline. That's not an issue.
Before we, excuse me, point of order. It seems that we have a request from one council member. But before we move on it, I think we need agreement with the entire council before we change a deadline that's already, or a timeline that's already been established.
Okay.
I'm not sure I agree with that.
Councilman Hernandez, so you'd like a motion to that effect?
I think we should. I mean, Mr. Gama is speaking on behalf of the entire council.
I don't believe I am.
And I don't know that I agree with that.
I, Councilperson Hernandez, I think we've all given suggestions of what we'd like to see. But on that particular case, if it's a specific thing, do we have a motion?
It was not my intent to make a motion. It was my intent to ask a question. And how we would gauge whether or not we have sufficient community involvement and/or council involvement is, I don't have an answer to that question. So I was just asking a question. If, in two weeks, the parties at B feel like, hey, maybe we need to do some more outreach, then, you know, is it possible? I wasn't suggesting that. I wasn't speaking on behalf of the council. I was asking a question.
I would like to make a motion, though, that we increase the outreach to be able to get more input from the general community and the various different groups that have been aforementioned.
I'll second that.
May we have a vote?
Councilmember Gama?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Proto Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Rollins?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay. So we will now move on to the number-two item, capital improvement update of Bubbling Springs Park. The two main areas are the Dog Park and the Sports Plaza. And we have Ms. Basua to provide that report.
We're going to get a presentation up for you in just a second.
I like presentations.
I'm not sure if our screens are showing up. I know one is, but did we not press the buttons or? You hit it. Start. What did you do? Okay, all screens are up.
Are we good to go? Okay, we will go ahead and get started. Good afternoon, Mayor. Mayor Protemp, members of the councils, city staff. The item before you this afternoon is an update on the capital improvement plan as it pertains to Bubbling Springs Park. Presenting today will be Anna Hanley, our recreation manager, along with Mr. Charles Cable, who is our principal engineer, myself. Anna Rendell with Lauterbach and Associates is here today. She is present. She moved on me. She's right there, and she's here to answer any questions, along with David, who should be on Zoom, which I can't tell whether he's there or not, but I hope he is.
I see. I see his name.
Okay, great. For the purpose of this presentation, I will be referring to Bubbling Springs Park from the north and the south side as, and I ask you to hold your questions or comments until the end of the presentation. Most of your questions and concerns will be answered through this report. I know that's really, really blurry to see, but one thing that I really wanted to point out in this presentation is that you, back in December 2020, allocated $1.6 million, a little bit over $1.6 million, for Bubbling Springs Park as it pertains to the field maintenance along with the Dog Park. So I want to bring that to your attention because that is money that has already been allocated for Bubbling Springs Park. As shown on this slide, you will, we are talking about this part of Bubbling Springs Park. The map that you see currently is taken from the park's master plan. In February of this year, I started working along with Lauterbach and Associates at the design, the pre-design of a dog park. A preliminary location was evaluated to the east, and I'm going to use my pointer here. In this area here, we determined that this is the location where we wanted to see the Dog Park. However, through this process, Ms. Anna Hanley directed us back to the park's master plan in which the park's master plan actually calls for the Dog Park to be in this location here. The park's master plan asks this area in C to actually be a multi-field use. And I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Hanley at this time, and she's going to explain why that is.
Thank you, Ms. Basua. With regards to the Dog Park location within the park parcels proposed, I wanted to revisit the CEQA compliance requirement that the city met, financed, and filed with the county in September of 2021. As a part of the Prop 68 application process, staff came before council for authorization to fund Ring Kong consultants at an approximate cost of $65,000 to perform the CEQA review related to the Prop 68 grant application. The environmental assessment included the evaluation of air quality, greenhouse gases, biological resources, a cultural assessment, noise study, and traffic analysis, all based on the proposed location within the park's master plan and subsequent Prop 68 park design. The park, excuse me, the Prop 68 grant process reevaluated our park's master plan and was fine-tuned with the support of our contracted grant writing consultant, along with the direct engagement efforts of community members reviewing the proposed parcel development as currently represented. Draft plans were presented at all of these engagements. We've made significant investment to date, including a public hearing during the adoption of the mitigated negative declaration, public surveys, staff time, along with the placement of proposed amenities as shown. Additional costs and added time for assessments of any CEQA amendments should be considered if changes to the proposed, excuse me, proposed locations are made.
Thank you, Ms. Hanley. With that information, staff went back to the drawing board. We went ahead and started surveying the area that was within the park's master plan. And of course, the the Dog Park will consist of exterior seating, drinking fountains, lighting, in order to be in compliance with the disabled access, parking, and public way access. Our next slide. Come April 2022, we got notification that we were out of compliance with the snack bar. After doing research, we have confirmed with the county of Ventura that they were never aware that there was actually a structure within the location. And just for people that are viewing at home, the current snack bar is located here within letter C. The initial reports indicated that utilities were also not available within this location. This is the current condition of the snack bar as it sits here today. As you can see, it would not meet any environmental health requirements. You can see we do not have the three-compartment sink that is needed. We have a water heater, a small water heater, that sits underneath this sink that is not in compliance. It's not up to code. There's not office, I'm sorry, not office space. There's not counter space in order to accommodate their food processing. With this in mind, and knowing that we were not in compliance, we went back to the drawing board with this along with Lauterbach and Associates in order to make available some kind of future operations for Little League as it pertains to the park's master plan. This is what Lauterbach and Associates rendering look like. To your left, you will see that they have a snack bar, state-of-the-art snack bar. In the middle, we have a seating area. To the right, we have a restroom facility. It is very important to note that this area, based on preliminary reports, we do not have any utilities in this area. The infrastructure is not there for us to build. Another thing to note, preliminary reports came back at $1.8 million in order to develop the snack bar and what we're calling the Sports Plaza. At this time, I'm going to turn this over to Charles Cable, who will be going over the staff recommendations.
Thank you. Well, as Gabby mentioned, since the Dog Park is already allocated, recommendations are based as such. Staff recommends we follow the master plan using a phased approach to support the future amenities. Phase one would include construction of sidewalk, walking paths for circulation, and connectivity to support future amenities, as identified in the master plan. Phase two would then be the construction of the Dog Park, the garden, since it's already allocated. Phase three would be to construct the snack bar and the Sports Plaza, which is not yet approved or allocated yet. Is that correct?
Correct.
Phase four is to construct the multi-use fields. And phase five would be the playground and barbecue upgrades. If it's the intent to construct the Dog Park first, we have options to meet that need. Option one is to construct only the necessary sidewalk to construct the Dog Park in the current location identified in the master plan. Option two is to reconfigure the master plan, swap locations of the multi-use fields and the Dog Park. And the Dog Park would be constructed east of the community center parking lot. So what does staff recommendations look like? Here's a visual for phase one. Phase one would be to construct the the walking paths and the sidewalk, which would connect the community center to the Bard, to the Bard Street, and provide ADA access to several amenities at the park in the future and existing amenities, and also include ADA access for the existing parking lots. The approximate cost just for the sidewalk infrastructure and circulation is 700K, 700,000. The reason to do this first phase is because these sidewalks will be required to meet the need for the future amenities and the ADA guidelines. This is what it would look like in the final build-out according to the master plan with the sidewalks. Phase one, construction of the walking paths. Phase two with the construction of the Dog Park. And phase three with the snack bar, Sports Plaza, and then the multi-use fields, like I previously mentioned, and the playground and barbecue upgrades. Speaking back to Dog Park alternative one, if we construct the Dog Park first in accordance with the master plan, we would still need to construct sidewalks to meet ADA guidelines. And the approximate cost for something like that is 312,000. If we go with the second alternative and construct the Dog Park first, we don't have to construct as much sidewalk. However, that would require that we reconfigure the master plan and switch where the Dog Park will be located with the multi-use fields. And like Anna mentioned, there might be additional permitting costs associated with environmental permitting. These are just construction costs. We're looking at 192,000. The snack bar and the Sports Plaza, with respect to snack bar, Gabby identified some issues that we're currently facing. With the current snack bar, the feasibility or permit solution will have to be evaluated, and staff will have to return to prevent findings and options. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Anna to talk about the continuity of the snack bar operations. Thank you.
Given the time that's involved in the projects proposed, it was identified the continuity of the snack bar operations is obvious priority for staff and the city. So I'm going to address that item. As far as the alternatives that have been deployed to date, the league has outsourced food options by way of food truck vendors. They've also been in possession of a temporary food facility type-two permit, which only allows them to offer prepackaged goods for sale to the public and their league members. And neither one of these is addressing the community need as it is. It's proven cost prohibitive for all of their participants and the families within our community, and nor is it supplanting any lost revenue that the league is experiencing. So neither one of those two options is proven feasible at this point. As a team, we were able to interface with the environmental health division, and we've garnered a lot of clarity from that team meeting. The league could be eligible for the designation of a community event distinction with the environmental health department, which allows for 25 consecutive or non-consecutive days within a 90-day period. This distinction can be obtained for each respective portion of the league's seasonal offerings. So this would allow them to facilitate a snack bar operation by applying for the community event distinction along for their spring season, an all-star season, and a fall ball offering, each allocating 25 days of operation within that period. The application fees would be waived by the county if the applications are submitted 30 days in advance of the community event and if a member of the league has attended the free temporary food facility training, which is a half-day course. So all of that would need to be completed by the applicant, but then there would be no associated fees for the related permit. Environmental health has made the commitment to provide the city with a list of vendors that sell temporary food facility-related equipment along with the conducting a site visit here at our park to discuss achievable configurations. Because the goal going forward is what is the path to have some type of snack bar offering that the league can operate in order to fulfill the community needs and restore their revenue. So what we're proposing in support of the Little League resuming snack bar operations is that staff would like to explore the cost of outfitting a temporary food facility canopy as shown on this slide with the necessary equipment for an outdoor compliant kitchen. This schematic is what is used by vendors and farmers markets and at festivals. With the recreation division hosting increased community events, there's also been an interest in complementing those events with a food component. So we, as a city, are also currently restricted by the lack of proper permits and equipment. A proposal I would like to make is that we consider during the league's offseason or non-use of this equipment, that it could be made available to city staff to also deploy a temporary food setup as an offering for our community events. So it's intended to be a shared resource as with primary use and distinction given to the Little League first and foremost, but with it available as a city resource in a secondary capacity. And this is the closest restoration of the snack bar operation that would be compliant with the environmental health division. And with that, I'll hand it back to you.
Thank you. This is going to conclude our presentation of the Bubbling Springs Capital Improvement Update. We are available to answer any questions, concerns, but more than anything, we're looking forward to your direction on how to proceed moving forward.
Okay, I know there's two different components. Does the council wish to handle each component separately or just collectively talk about all of them?
Collectively, I mean, if you're asking me.
Okay.
May I make a comment?
Councilperson Gama?
I just want to say I think the sidewalk is super important. I think we all would agree that safety is our number-one priority. And all of us have attended the Toys for Tots, and it's always a little unnerving to see parents with strollers trying to and it's always a little unnerving to see parents with strollers trying to navigate Park Avenue and or then trying to navigate the side of the curb or the roots and this and that. And so um I'm hoping that everyone agrees that the sidewalk is super important. Um, you know, and I'm thinking about this, and um in my lifetime, I remember the building of the Espinade. And then I remember the tearing down of the Espinade. And then I see what's there today being highly productive, highly useful, and um I think most of us may agree that it was an improvement. When I look at Bubbling Springs and realize like my first time there was when I was four years old collecting crawdads in a paper bag and taking them home. Um, you know, we've got a lot of use out of that park. And, and um I think, um, I think the dog park makes sense in that corner section because of the parking, but now it doesn't conform with our, our park's master plan. So speaking only for myself, I think the sidewalk is a great start. Um, and I also think that um we as a council, as a city, as staff members, we should take another look at the park's master plan with the idea to use as much space as possible in that park. Because as I look at it, there's a lot of dead space. And, you know, we want to squeeze as much um recreational facility activities, amendments as possible in that park. And um I know that there's trees that are forty, fifty years old. Um, I think if we took a second look at the park's master plan and um and, and with the idea to, to get as much recreational amenities and activities we can out of that park, while at the same time preserving Little League's um long stature there, I think, um, I think we can make really good progress. But um, and for the public, it's really important to understand that, yes, that snack bar operated for, I don't know, forty years. And out of the blue, the county came up one day and said, oh, by the way, uh, we didn't know this was there, and they shut us down. Excuse me. So, you know, these are the, the realities that we're dealing with, and, and we know that we need that fundraising arm for Little League. So um, I like everything that was presented to us, except I think the dog park would be more cost efficient if it was located next to that parking lot. And I think if we looked at the entire park as a whole and identified dead space and identified ways to um free up that dead space so that could be used for um recreational amenities and our activities, I think we could do our public a real big service. Um, um, and there's a lot, there's a lot that we want to do there, so um, but first and foremost, I think the sidewalk is a great starting point. Thank you.
So yes, so I agree with the, obviously, we need the sidewalks implemented before we even decide to build anything. It's apparently necessary, so. And I wouldn't be opposed to um the alternative dog park location, since it's a much more cost-effective approach. Um, I am not at all ready to spend one point eight million dollars on a part, on a plaza. Um, I think we can come up with some much more cost-effective solutions. I like the alternative that you are recommending so that the Little League can still be able to provi- do fundraising during their season. And I want to see alternative um options as well in terms of just not necessarily putting in permanent buildings. I mean, there's, there has to be other options out there that we can look at to the make sure that everyone can use uh the snack bar and we can use it at other events as you suggested. I think that's it for now. I think that's enough. I mean, get the sidewalks in place and then take a look at the master plan.
So um, just to clarify, Councilmember Parats, you are, um, your comments are, let's put the sidewalk in first. You're not ready um to invest the money at this time. Um, but you would like to look at alternative methods um in order to use the snack bar area.
Yes.
For other purposes.
Yeah, I think the price tag on that plaza, I don't even know where that came from. I don't remember it in the presentation, but that's pretty large price tag, and we can find, we have to be able to find other solutions in that.
Thank you.
We do have our uh engineering firm that did the design um and could potentially answer or address any question with regard to the configuration required to certify and permit a uh permanent uh building to, to, to operate food and beverage.
So if I may, you know, the one point eight is just one point eight. Uh, we've never seen a breakdown as to is it infrastructure the major, I mean, one point eight million for what a four hundred foot, square foot snack bar seems awful lot.
So I, I want to clarify, that one point eight, and I'm going to use this map. The snack bar is here currently where the red dot is at. That includes bringing in the sidewalk. So if we bring these sidewalks in, that one point eight price is going to go down.
I still want to see other, I mean, we can go down in scale. It doesn't need to be such a massive construction. I mean,
We, we do have other options. We, we do have other options, and once we're um ready with that design, we will bring those to you. But we do have an option to bring in a prefabricated bathroom. Um, we need connections. We have options to bring in a prefabricated snack bar. Um, El Rio Little League, um, if you look um off Vineyard, those are prefabricated um buildings. So we can bring something like that um in order to try to save the money. Um, but, but again, we're not really ready to discuss that particular design with you um at this time, but it is something definitely we will be bringing back.
To put in the infrastructure on the bottom, what is, do you have an estimated cost of what that, what we're looking at for that? For all the piping and everything?
And do you want to?
There is a, there is a, uh, this is David Kesterson.
David? David is the project architect. I've been working with him on the project. Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I just wanted to say that there is a, a fairly detailed cost estimate. It included both the um, a snack bar based on another um, another facility that, that the city of Oxnard has, and also a um, it, it, it included an, another complete restroom building as well um on that side of the, of, of Bubbling Springs. Whereas now there's only one that's uh near the play area in um, on the um, on the northwest side of Bubbling Springs um spring. So um, there, there is more information. We did at least pitch the idea of doing some prefab buildings to save money, but were given direction to pursue at least preliminarily permanent buildings in that area that's in the uh master plan site. So um, if um, if council wants to give direction to um pursue less expensive means of uh addressing a permanent snack bar, we could certainly do so.
Okay.
Y- yes, our, the preliminary um, what we refer to as an order of magnitude cost. It's just sort of big picture cost that we got estimates from uh Staples Construction. Uh, utilities at about a hundred and thirty-five thousand, exterior improvements at about a hundred and sixty-five. There isn't any, well, I can thumb through, I wasn't prepared, but we can look and find out what costs were just for bringing in the infra- in infrastructure. We're using that as kind of a broad term. Really specifically, there's no uh sanitary sewer there. So sewer would have to be brought in there. Electricity, I assume, well, there's probably electrical there, but again, um, a, a larger electrical service. Um, I think sewer is the big one. And finding out where sewer can actually be connected in that, in that area might not be as simple as we think. It's not always the shortest distance between two points. Uh, so could be added cost. David, did you have any additional information on that?
Well, you know, and we can open up what documents we have to council if they wanted to examine them, but I think that from a, um, a, a broad brush approach, talking about the sidewalks and, and if we are going to stick with the dog park in the current location, I think that that's fine. We can work within the bounds of the master plan. It made sense to me to put the dog park closer to the, to the parking lot, but um, I, I do realize that that does um, might trigger uh additional sequoia uh examination, which I think would slow down any process. So um, I um, I agree that, that, that we could make it work, and I think a sidewalk on uh Park Avenue uh makes a tremendous amount of sense, whether it be for the dog park or for the future play fields. So um, I think that if anything was to get greenlit today, or at least get, get gotten direction on, it would be those items um to move forward with. And then we could continue to um look at other options for um, and then uh for permanent buildings, but also um Anna's um uh recommendation about working with the county on uh temporary facilities that, that could support Little League for um uh the interim are, 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 are good options to, to really pursue.
Thanks, David. I'm going to go ahead. Charles, did you have any additional comments that you'd like to add?
Um, I just wanted to, to mention that we are looking at the snack bar feasibility for a permanent location. The challenges will be the sewer, because that's, as it's presented, um, we would have to cross the creek to either connect on Bard, I mean, on Park, I'm sorry, or we'd have to go to Park. Uh, the sewers are kind of shallow there, so fall would be an issue. The previous snack bar was supported by a leach field for sanitary sewer, according to the as built we have on file. So um, that's all I wanted to mention.
Okay, I'd like to try to get some of the other councilman's comments, and then we can kind of have follow-up questions, because I, it's a fairly comprehensive thing to deal with. So at this point in time, uh, Councilman Hernandez, you had your hand raised.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Rollins. Um, and I want to thank staff and the consultant for their work on this project and uh the recommendation that you've offered us. Um, I generally support your recommendations um for the sidewalk and the dog park. Um, the snack bar, yeah, I was out there on Sunday um talking with Anna Bolo, and I took a tour of the, the snack bar. It's very small, not, not very accommodating. Um, and, you know, I like the idea of the shades over the seating area, because it was very sunny, and many, many of the people who came had to bring their own umbrellas um and bring their own shade with them. The problem I'm having with um the recommendations is the funding. I don't have a sense of what's, what's currently funded and what's not. Um, are the sidewalks, um, maybe the city manager could answer this. Are the sidewalks currently funded?
The sidewalks are not funded. They're, um, they're, uh, anything associated with the dog park um is only for the um construction of the dog park. Um, and then the is service connections to the dog park, but not sidewalks. And no other sidewalks are currently, currently enjoy funding allocation.
Okay, and how much are we talking about for the sidewalks? Do we have a general estimate on that?
Seven hundred K, so I think um I'm going to go back to a, a, my starting slide. This is why I asked.
Okay, I just can't see your slides, Ms. Basua.
Ah, okay.
Yeah, they're taking up us, just a small window on my computer, and I can't enlarge it in any way.
I see, so um, one of the first slides, so one of the first slides, Ms. Councilmember Hernandez, was the fact that I pointed out through the ARPA funding, we, you have authorized one point six million dollars um for the park at Bubbling Springs. If the desire based on today is and, and, and again, this is at your direction, is staff recommendation is the construction of the multi-use fields be done in phase four. We currently have funding for that, so that funding can be reallocated for other areas as you see appropriate.
Okay, so I'm looking at the ARPA funding, and I'm seeing, I'm not seeing one point six, I'm seeing one point four for the play fields and the multi-fields. That's not the pot of anything we're talking about, is it?
That is part of the pot. The other pot of um money is two hundred and sixty-two thousand for the dog park.
Yeah, I see two sixty-nine.
Two sixty-nine, so it's two sixty-nine and the one point four um is what I'm referring to.
And that would be used um instead, are, are you thinking of part of that money being used for what? For?
For the side, for, for, for phase one and phase two.
Phase one and phase two. Okay. So, but then what would we do with the play fields? We'd still be without money for the play fields, correct?
Correct. That would be something that we would have to work internally um within the capital plan in order to bring that forward to you.
Okay. I was actually um at the Paso Robles um California, League of California Cities conference meeting with the channel counties in, on Friday night, and I heard Fiona Ma speak, and she was talking about um monies that sh- that uh she has um access to for special projects. I just quick, just want to make a quick note to s- suggest that we look into that to see if she can help us um with any additional funding that might um be out there. Um, okay, so then the uh, the snack bar. I, I do want to see a breakdown of those costs. I understand the utilities, the infrastructure is probably the most costly part of that project, correct?
That is correct, but at this time, I'm not really, I, I'm not ready to present um a design for the snack bar. We're going to have to go back to the drawing table, give you a few options. We can definitely include prefabricated buildings to come in, um, smaller scale area. Um, one thing that we will have to do in order to accommodate that phase is the in- infrastructure underneath.
Okay. Okay, uh, I have no other questions or comments. I, I support the recommendations that staff has provided. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also rec- uh, like the recommendations from staff. I think sidewalks are important thing. I have, I would like to see the um snack bar, snack bar. I, I, I like that. I, I know it seems a little expensive. I, I would like to see the breakdown, but I'm, I'm pro the snack bar. Um, I think that would be something nice for a program that's been here in our city for a really long time. I did have one question. Uh, have we mentioned anything about disc golf on Bubbling Springs?
We, we have. Um, Mr. Connors has brought that to my attention. Um, once we do the multi-use fields, that's something that we do plan on bringing in. That would be phase four.
Yeah, so the, whatever the final configuration of Bubbling Springs, we will um, um, our, you know, thankfully, our uh newly hired supervisor arborist um is a um, a competitive disc golfer, but he has identified a designer that can work within the structure of our parks master plan to plot out a, a nine, or nine disc uh course.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, um, obviously, s- sidewalks are essential, so that goes without saying. We need to do that. I had a number of questions, though. Um, the Little League has been without a snack bar for a year. And two years now. And what can we do that they can have something up and running in March, be it temporary? Going, because uh, these are very great plans and will take a lot of money and take a lot of time. And knowing the other capital improvement projects that we've done in the past, uh, how soon could we get a portable snack bar up there or what? I know you, you talked about it a little bit, maybe you can go for it, uh, describe it. Is that facility there a ready, a, a ready-made facility that can be moved in? Is that something that they're going to take the existing facility and upgrade? What were your thoughts on that?
Sure, so we were hoping to have them actually visit the site, because there were some different configurations proposed as far as this three compartment sink requirement. Um, without getting, you know, too specific as far as how we can deploy this, I'm confident that we can erect a temporary food facility for the upcoming season. And I failed to mention, and I'm sorry, I did want to revisit this, but the distinction that we're making here is that the league would be the applicant for the specific permit. However, it would be supplemented However, it would be supplemented by city-funded equipment. So staff is proposing that the city purchase the equipment that would be required in the temporary food facility. So essentially, we are making the league whole again, because the snack bar is not a permitted facility. We are offering an external option with the caveat that the city, in off times and during the season when they're not in use, maybe this is a mobilized version, because as I'm sure you're familiar with at farmers markets and festivals, there is a requirement to set those up and break them down daily. So this is a labor-intensive option, and that is something that I've already brought to the league's attention. So this isn't without that level of awareness that there is work to be done on their behalf. And so we're hoping that the review with the environmental health division includes some levels of permission to store the equipment in either the adjacent building or have some type of cooperative connection to where we're using that space in some way, but that we're meeting the regulation and requirement as far as the external component.
So in my minor research on this, there's been, there's a number of types of facilities that are modular, that are already meet California standards, that are designed for California standards, that can provide a snack bar, and that in fact could be movable to not only perhaps at that location, but if you were to have it at the other various different events that you have. I think staff's looked into that a little bit further. Can you address that?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that again?
Yeah. There are a number of, there's a number of companies right now that provide portable snack bars that are complete with, you know, cooking facilities, meet California standards, ready-made, portable, for under $200,000.
That is, that is correct.
That are bigger than the facility now.
Are we specifically speaking in regards to a mobilized version?
Yeah.
Yes.
I understand. Okay, so the recommendation from staff would be to pursue the external non-mobile versions, for instance, a food truck, given the potential for that particular asset to depreciate in value, the preventative maintenance requirements, adding it to the city's insurance if it was a vehicular option. So in order to go live in March, we think the most attainable plan would be to pursue this external path that also gives us a level of mobility. So it may be something that we're coming back to. I'm sorry, I'm not able to articulate all of those points at this particular meeting, but something we would be bringing back to the council would include, how do we transport it? How is this easily achievable for the league with the least amount of labor involved in addition to the city? We both want to be able, because it would be a city asset at the end of the day, to take advantage of that.
Yeah, because I've just seen, and the staff has done a very good job late doing a variety of different special events, and there's been talk in the past of like, you know, maybe renewing like farmer's market and a variety of different types of things. And while maybe the priorities during, what I've seen in other cities, maybe the priority at one period of time may be, say, the youth sports leagues, but then it's portable enough so that you can move it on to some other location. And the information that I've seen, some of these are fairly elaborate, bigger than the existing snack bar and already meet the requirements, and may be able to be put in there in March when their program starts.
So Mayor Rollins, based on my initial research and speaking to Anna Bolo with Little League, that was not a preferred method for them. They were afraid of vandalism within, you know, a mobile option. And I know she's here today, and she'll probably make some comments, but that was something that was addressed with her.
From a safety standpoint?
From a safety standpoint. And I'm sure she can go ahead and speak more to her concerns in regards to this mobile option.
I think all our public facilities are, you know, we're concerned about safety, and I'm probably, even in the past number of years, a lot of them have gotten broken into. So like, whatever kind of security we put in any investment, I think is part of like, you know, should be part of the plan. The other question I had was on the field itself, and there's conversations as to putting in some kind of a multipurpose field. From the plans, how big a field is that? I know I've been involved with three kids and soccer for a number of years, and is this a field that kids could compete in at what age? Is this just kind of a little practice field? What would the size of that field be? And I guess the follow-up to that is, I know we have a number of other facility, a number of other park facilities that may, we may want to consider that are better suited, that are larger, that could probably fulfill the needs of, say, fields. Like, for example, I went out and about eight months ago, I measured Miranda Park, and instead of trying to fit something into a small skinny space over Bubbling Springs, you could put a full-size adult soccer field and then divide it up into a couple of fields in, a couple of youth-sized fields and may not, and maybe the, I don't know, I've heard that the irrigation system in Bubbling Springs is antiquated and doesn't have enough pressure to keep the grass green, even if we weren't in a water shortage. Maybe, maybe it's better to kind of, maybe Miranda Park has better watering system right now, instead of trying to punch everything into that facility. So that's one of my thoughts. Sidewalk, irrigation, snack bar. And, you know, my, again, I got to rebate, come back to like the Little League. Part of the Little League experience, or any kind of a youth sports experience in the snack bar, is not only to raise money, but to provide the service to the people who participate. It's part of the total ambiance. So like, I'm very much in favor of putting some kind of a snack bar. I did a little equating at 1.8 million dollars, we could probably give the Little League $20,000 for the next 100 years and provide, you know, the fundraising part of it. But more importantly, it's like the ambiance of, or another addition is the ambiance of being able to have that hot dog, or those french fries, or those chili dogs. So that's important in the scope of all the different things that, you know, are part of our master plan that we're trying to provide the entire community, disc golf, soccer fields, skate parks, a lot of different needs that meet the needs of different people. I just want to have a balance there, but I do want to provide something quickly. So.
Mayor Rollins, may I?
Yes.
You know, the comments that Mayor Rollins just made have taken me back to what I said earlier, is that we got the Parks Master Plan, and I don't feel like we should be stuck to it 100%. I think, you know, we monitor our results, we look at other alternatives, and my hope is that we could take a look at Bubbling Springs as a whole, and perhaps Miranda Park and Volker Park, and readdress it, and not, for example, at Bubbling Springs, there's a lot of dead space. So how do we, how do we utilize that dead space to meet the needs of our master park plan? And from my vantage point, it feels like if we were to readdress, recalibrate, and with the goal to maximize the use of all the space there, and then I hear people bring up trees. Well, trees are wonderful. Some of those trees are very large, and trees can be removed and replaced. And I think if we have a different mindset, we might be able to accomplish much, much more with Bubbling Springs, as opposed as just trying to stuff everything in there as it now sits. So I like the direction we're going, but I just want to be extremely diligent in maximizing the use of every inch of that park for all the needs that we're seeking to do.
So Councilmember Gama, if I may address that question. The Parks Master Plan does call for the use of every single open space. It even calls for a detachable fence that is currently located here in this area in order to make another field here. So that is part of the Parks Master Plan, but more importantly, you've mentioned that you don't want, you want us to relook at the Parks Master Plan and come back with something? I mean...
I'm just suggesting that, yes, we, because obviously, I like the dog park in the corner, the Parks Master Plan doesn't. So yeah, I'm suggesting that, well, maybe we could take another look at it and come up with, because if, as I understand it, our hands are tied for the dog park because of the Parks and Rex Master Plan, is that correct?
No, that can, that can be changed. Staff recommendation is that we leave the dog park where it's currently called for in the Parks Master Plan. And one of the reasons is, is because this area has a lot of mature trees, and we can build around that. The multi-fields here, there's open space, which would obviously make it easy to bring in the dog park, but if you wanted to bring in the multi-fields in this space, we would have to clear all this area out. All these trees would be, would have to go.
And I'm just, even if you remove all of the trees there, that's a kind of a substandard, skinny, small field that if you're trying to encourage groups like, say, AYSO or any organized sports, that would be very small area. And then my past experience also is that when you try to overlay a field onto, say, a softball field, what generally happens is it wears the heck out of the grass. And like, and I've had direct experience in that where, at the end of a soccer season, the field is bare about the time that you're trying, and you have to set aside three or four months just to re-turf it for a baseball field. And if we're in a situation where we're just direly short of space, that may be the option. But then there's other parks where are very minimally being used for those types of things that you could probably do without having to multitask a field that's already brown and worn out as it is.
Thank you. I believe, Ms. Hane.
That was a concept that was brought to us from MIG, but after community engagement efforts during Prox 68, that was settled on probably a non-starter for the city. So I know it was part of the Parks Master Plan, but the Parks Master Plan evolved to exclude that after talks specifically with the Little League, that that was not something that we wanted to pursue as far as use of the field in a combination way. But to go back to your earlier question concerning, would they be regulation size? Originally slated in what's identified for the multi-use fields in the park parcel, would include that for a six-U and an eight-U offering, so both sizes. The other thing that I would like to take the opportunity to mention is that this particular park has a really unique and, it's actually an incredible legacy that is for soccer specifically. So the Guerrero Youth Academy sort of descends upon this particular park, and so do a lot of other impromptu practices that are happening on a regular basis. So I would encourage people to go and watch how many teams are taking advantage of this particular park in the evenings for specifically soccer. And one of the outcomes that we were able to achieve when talking about this directly with the community members was, the people that are facilitating those practices, the coaches themselves grew up playing soccer there, so they returned to that particular park. Originally, when we identified, this city has no soccer offering, and staff was, in the very beginning stages of the Parks Master Plan process, we called for that immediately. It was, this community has no facility within our city boundaries to offer soccer. We're missing something here.
I agree with you 100%, and I have noticed that they set up their goals around, they set up their little play, practice areas around the trees that are in the way. I also noticed that Miranda Park gets soccer players at times, too. And Mayor Rollins made a suggestion that that may be a better spot for a multi-use field. I mean, there used to be a time years ago when there was organized softball leagues pretty much every day at Miranda Park. In the night, the lights were on. I mean, I remember 25 years ago, that was the thing, but it's no longer the thing. So again, what I'm trying to suggest is that we have a really good starting point. We weren't successful in getting that grant, and so now here we are. We all agree that sidewalks are super important for Park Avenue. I don't think anybody could disagree with that. I think that's a really great starting point. But then, then we get back to the dog park, and then we get back to, okay, well, if we want soccer fields, you know, we have trees in the middle of a soccer field that's going to be there, so maybe we need to look at other alternatives. So those are my thoughts.
And I just want to say, I'm familiar with going down there quite a bit and seeing the soccer played there, but at very best, using that field, they can use there for practice and drills and those types of things. They can't play any kind of, so if the soccer clubs or AYSO ever wants to do something comprehensive for the community, that's not going to be the location to do it. They'll be able to use it to do, I remember when I coached soccer, like, you know, I'd bring my little group of 10-year-olds, and they'd be out there, and they'd be practicing, and you'd get whatever little piece of area you could to practice. But you can play a game there. There were places that we went that had full-size soccer fields, or even kid-sized soccer fields that you could have a comprehensive program. And I just, knowing the fields the way they are right now, I just don't look at that. I mean, it's always going to be a little Band-Aid type of a thing.
Absolutely. And staff is here to take your direction and recommendation as far as that's concerned. I just did want to clarify that what was outlined would be a six-U and an eight-U offering, but that's not to say that Miranda Park would be best suited for a more expansive soccer complex.
Yeah. And what Councilperson Gama had said was that, you know, it used to be, while Little League is open to both boys and girls, it's primarily the boys with a few girls playing. While before, they used to be able to use the Miranda Park as a multi-use soccer field and for, I think it was Bobby Socks or USA Girl Softball, or whatever the particular league was, but they had a fairly comprehensive softball program there, which we're not meeting that need either.
No. So in order to at least wrap up the staff recommendations, I believe I heard from all five council members, you are in agreements with staff's recommendation that the first phase should be to construct, construct the walking paths at Bubbling Springs Park. Okay, so staff will be coming back to you at a later time in order to fund that project. The second direction that we need is whether or not we continue the dog park within the Parks Master Plan location, or if you choose to want to move the location to the multi-fields area. So we do need direction on that.
I mean, I would feel, I would feel comfortable moving it closer to the park.
And please keep in mind that by moving it, it will trigger SEQA.
I like staff's recommendation. I know maybe it's not where we would want it, but if it's going to be more cost-effective, then I think that's probably the best way to go.
Well, it wasn't. It's three times more.
If, right, the way I see it right here, that's going to cost more?
Yes.
For...
Can you go back to the other slide that showed the...
No, no, we're on that slide, right?
No.
So, I'm sorry, Councilmember Parretti, want to go back to slide?
The one that showed the other alternative for the dog park.
And before we go, I see, Councilperson Hernandez, your hand's raised, and I can just barely see it, but did you want to weigh in?
Well, I just wanted to support the staff recommendations and remind the council that this could trigger SEQA, which will cause an additional delay. And I think from what I'm hearing from our residents, they, they are in, they're desirous of a dog park. They want our improvements of the parks done. They're anxious for it, and to cause any further delay after all this work has been done already, I think is a not good, a good use of our resources. So I, I would support moving forward with the staff recommendations as is.
Right, so is this slide, is this what you recommend?
No, this is not what we're recommending. The recommendation is...
I would actually like to clarify that last slide, so it's clear. Go back to Alternative 2, please. Alternative 2 just shows sidewalk for construction just for the dog park, so it doesn't necessarily cost more. That's just, the blue outline there is just the sidewalk for the dog park without phase one. So if you go back to... So if you go back to file staff recommendations.
So that that's staff's recommendation?
You just, from what I'm hearing from the council, direction is to construct all the sidewalks for the seven hundred thousand. Um, but we need that direction on where to put the dog park as opposed to multi fields. The cost will not change except for the cost that will be associated with updating our permits or environmental requirements. And perhaps the tree relocations.
And also by um, choosing to move the dark park closer to the east of the community center, um, will trigger sequoia. So we will have to go back to environmental.
But it's, what does that mean? That we're gonna incur?
It's gonna take, no, no, not so much. Um, sequel has already been completed. Um, and Ms. Haley can speak more in depth in regards to that.
Just sort of require us contracting with the consultant again for an amendment in regards to the new consideration of the proposed location.
I understand that, but um.
I mean, we we can do that if that's the direction of the council.
But it, but in terms of dog park parking in your recommendation, basically, there is no parking. You're gonna have to park on Park Avenue.
We will bring the AD, well, we will bring ADA ADA accessibility to this parking lot within the community center and then they will have the sidewalks in order to get accessible to the dog park.
Okay, I'll just uh, make a motion to uh.
Excuse me, sorry. I just wanted to remind you, we do have a public comment.
Okay, let's hear the public comments, sorry.
Um, Anna Bolo.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers, staff. Am I being timed?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, in regards to the snack bar or sports plaza as referred to on the park master plan, budgeted at one point eight million, including the snack bar, infrastructure, sidewalk on J Street only, bathrooms and seating area. I get that it's a lot of money when you think of the fancy snack bar plans that you recently provided. The sports plaza to the park master plan had restrooms and building renovations included. If you want to downgrade the building, the infrastructure alone is going to eat up the budget. Now, the one point four million in ARPA funds, nine hundred and twenty five thousand three hundred to be used for the baseball fields, seventy five thousand to turf hydro seed. We are in a drought and we have about six barrels of seed at the league. This is, this is a wasteful spend of our money. Seven hundred and fifty thousand allocated to irrigation needed, but we've managed for years with almost no pressure. If the city stops shutting off the water and forgetting to turn it back on, the grass won't be so dry, even with the drought. Ninety thousand in infield mix. We replenish once a year at a cost of seventy, uh, seven thousand since a lot of it blows away throughout the year. Five hundred for bases, bleachers, pitchers mound. We need to replace some magnets in three fields, cost five hundred and twenty dollars. I already ordered them. Five thousand in portable fencing and netting to separate fields, that's not needed. Twenty two thousand eight oh nine uh, importable aluminum goals and wheels, new foul lines and outfield chain fencing for each field number three. With fence cap, fence post footings, we will need to replace two missing foul post leaves, cost six hundred and eighty dollars. Unless the hill is being taken down to expand our field to comply with Little League twelve U tournament requirements, we don't need a new fence at the cost of our snack bar. Now, the remainder, four hundred and seventy four thousand seven hundred for the multi-use sports at Bubbling Springs. You have soccer, multipurpose fields planned at both Miranda and Bubbling Springs with no type of organization supporting these sports in our city. The Panthers are happy at Wining High. Those who identified the need for soccer like the Guerrero Oxnard Youth Academy during the public survey play, um, they play in Oxnard or travel. We no longer have the ability to use the school fields for practices as they have restricted use until our school programs are are done at six thirty, but daylight savings, it's impossible for us to use. We are being pushed out of the city and we are the only active organization within. Now, you also have the skate park, four hundred thousand. The city does not have clear guidance on where to install the park. Please sideline this project to fund and complete one project that has people coming in droves to City Hall to support. Altogether, one point eight million. Little League has been here for sixty three years and we operate year round. You want to focus on improving in areas that have the highest demand. Besides us jamming City Hall with kids again, not sure how else we can make you guys see what's right in front of you. On behalf of our board of directors, we thank you for your considerate consideration to our request to get our snack snack bar back. Thank you.
If I may comment, I I liked all of Anna Bolo's uh, comments. To summarize, you're basically saying the snack bar is more important and not necessarily some of the stuff for the fields, right?
Correct.
Okay. And I think that's one of the things that I mentioned in closed session, which I, not every council member got it here. But I just want to say thank you, Anna Bolo. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other? There are no more comments.
We are asking for direction on whether or not we should maintain the dog park where it's currently um, asked for in the park's master plan. And by doing so, it's not going to trigger anything additional. We are already in the design um, process within this location. Um, and we will continue to do that by moving the dog park closer to the community center. We will go back to the drawing table. We will go back to the community and ask for input. It will trigger sequoia.
And um, if I may, that that was my point. Um, I I don't feel like we should be married to this plan when there are a lot of considerations to be dealt with, i.e. trees in the middle of a of a of a soccer field and not having enough space for a soccer field. Um, so I mean, I I I think we're.
What, uh, let me, there's a, I again, I see hand raised for Councilperson Hernandez.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. So I think each of the council members have had um, at least three opportunities to pose their argument um, on behalf of either moving the dog park or following the master plan. I think we um, we probably need to take a vote on this uh, because it's just becoming redundant. I I support, again, I support the staff recommendations. I don't support the idea of any kind of delay on the implementation of the plan. Um, I trust that staff has done their due diligence in um, studying the appropriateness of the dog park where it is. And uh, I'd like to make a recommendation that the council approve um, all recommendations. Um, if we can do it that way, Mayor, that's, I guess that's gonna be up to you if we take them one by one or if we take them all together.
Okay, so there's a motion to keep the plans as it is. Is there a second?
Is this, is what I'm looking at right here? That's, that's what we're talking about. This is the plan, right?
That is staff's recommendation, but again, it's, we, we can change it if if that's your.
And that's the most affordable too.
No.
No.
It's, it it's, it's not that it's more affordable.
It goes against the plan.
No, this does not go against the plan. This rendering that you're seeing.
That's with the plan.
This is what the plan calls for.
Miss Councilmember Hernandez, she, this, this is what she's voting for.
By changing it, it's going to trigger additional costs.
So, Ms. Masua, I agree with the phases as is except for the price and the scale of the snack bar. I would like to see it downsize. I agree that we need to put a complex there, but I would like to see um, more cost effective. We need to be good stewards with money. And I don't think we need a huge facility like that. We're not Oxnard. We do not have a need for a huge facility.
Well, right, well, well, okay, so, so right now I have a motion by Councilperson Hernandez to accept the location of the dog park in the multi-use plan as part of the original plan. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Um, can we have a roll call about?
Yeah. Uh, Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Gama?
No.
Mayor Proton Martinez?
Oh, man. I almost want to go over there and check it out one more time.
I would say no, right at this point.
Um, Mayor Proton Martinez?
Ms. Masua, would you be able to tell me um, how much the delay would be and how much more additional cost it would take?
We would have to go back um, and do some public outreach. Um, Ms. Haley, would you be able to speak at the cost?
I don't think.
We would have to solicit that information from Ringcon at this point.
So a couple more months it would take? How much more money? No idea?
No idea, but it it is definitely doable. I mean, the park's master plan is not set in stone. It can be changed at any time.
Okay, so I'm I'm in favor to moving the dog park closer to the to the parking structure.
Okay, we we will start on that process?
So just to clarify, Mayor Proton Martinez, your vote is?
No.
No, and Mayor Rollins?
No.
Uh, motion fails.
Okay, we we will go ahead. Um, staff.
Can I, can I, do I need to make a motion to move the dog park closer? Or is that just understood?
I think that's understood, but if you want to make the motion and make it official.
A point of order. So we are going to move forward with the sidewalk.
That is correct.
And 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 that's gonna keep you busy.
That's gonna keep us busy along with, at the same time, we're going to be um, moving forward with the dog park concurrently.
I I just, because you you estimated the cost for the sidewalk of being what, five hundred thousand? Seven hundred thousand. By any means, I I know that we do a lot of roadwork in the city. Uh, do we have the ability perhaps to do part or all of it in-house to save some money since we do roadwork and cement work all the time?
We have a crew of about six people. Um, they are hitting about twenty water leaks uh, a month. It would take an extremely long time for them to do that. So I would say no.
Yeah, we have about four people in our street.
Oh, well, nice try.
It's about thirty two thousand square feet of sidewalk, so that would not work.
But the the community benefit of thirty two thousand feet of sidewalk is huge, right? I think we all could be happy and that's.
Yeah, okay. And and the the biggest point of that particular addition to this plan is it solves all eighty eight problems for every amenity that we put in Bubbling Springs.
Ms. Masua, is there anything else you need from us?
Um, phase three, the snack bar and sports plaza and phase four and phase five. Just want to make sure that you are all in agreements with um, with those phases moving forward.
No, I would like to see alternatives to the snack bar and sports plaza.
Yes, that that means we we will work on bringing additional information to you along with funding.
So what about the alternative recommendation by Ms. Haley about the for the Little League in a temporary? Can we approve that as well?
Yes, and Ms. Haley can come back um, at a later time, um, depending on cost.
I had a question. Would your plan make it available for Little League in March to have a snack bar to be able to use for the beginning of their season?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay.
Good to go. One more question, because I'm a little fuzzy on this. So it's gonna be a temporary snack bar that will be broken down after each week, or is it gonna be left up during the season? How how is that gonna be moved?
I think it did to her vandalism and or theft, we wouldn't, the requirements of that particular setup do require it to be broken down after each use. And it is with um, within the league's purview to decide which twenty five days of operation that would be most profitable for them during that ninety day period. So um, that is the the stipulation within the law as far as how frequently they could use um, that community event distinction to to operate. And so.
But regardless, they could use the current facility for prepackaged goods for sale for fundraising?
It is my understanding that they are in possession of a type two permit, which allows them to sell prepackaged food.
I I I see Anna Bolo making it, could you clarify for us? Because I think what we're all trying to make sure is that your fundraising apparatus is in place and good to go when the season comes around.
Yeah, no, so our snack bar, we cannot use at all. I mean, we store stuff in there, but we cannot use it at all. We have to take everything outside every time that we use it. We're I I followed all of the county's guidelines. I got permitted for the temporary food facility, which is gonna be the same same thing. I submitted our schedules for uh, this previous season. Uh, so if you look at things, you're, we're gonna have fourteen Saturdays that we're gonna be able to use from the start of our season, March third, to the end of May, a couple of days before, a a couple, probably like a week, a week and a half before May. And then one day during the week throughout the entire time. So then it'll stop in June to comply with the ninety days. And then during our tournament season, we won't be able to have a snack bar unless we start later, unless we don't start at the beginning of our season. So it's, we're trying to stay in those ninety days.
And so um, and and just for clarification, they have ninety days and uh, per event. So the season would be an event, tournament would be event. Um, and then there's fall, fall ball that would be an event. Each one of them is considered a separate event. And so they get twenty five day reset for each one of those events should take you through the entire season.
Okay, so uh, it's something that I'd have to go back to the, I guess, county because when we try to apply for our regular season for us, our our, not not our tournaments, and I wasn't referring to tournaments, tournaments start for us in July. So that's not really a problem, but we still have our um, All-Stars going on um, that that are not related to our in-house tournaments that we put our beat the heat tournaments together.
But that could be a separate event too.
Yeah, and we um, had a a long discussion and we highlighted all those little pieces in terms of ball play throughout the year. And we did the math and it demonstrated that we could um, satisfy all of your requirements through separate events for each one of those with twenty five days in each segment of those events.
Okay, so then would it be beneficial for us to somehow split up our season because regardless, our regular season consists of ninety days, within those nine ninety days, we could only use it for the twenty five days.
And and I I think it's gonna work out. We'll have to sit down and kind of go through those calendars and then we'll work with environmental health in order to make the permits uh, address all those um, opportunities uh, to to fill, to the greatest extent possible, full snack bar service operations.
You know, and I I I know this is complaining, but I guess I'm gonna complain. What what upsets me is when we're unable to provide snack bar service, then illegal snack bar people are selling food there. And you know, where's the county then? And so I I just want to make sure that we are all hands on deck. We have to support the youth of our community. Snack bar for baseball has been in play for how many years until we ran into this nafu? And so it's, it's troubling that we're in this situation and we're and we're having difficulty mapping out and making sure they have that fundraising arm that's available. So what do we have, anything else that we could offer? Can we say for sure that Bubbling Springs Little League is gonna be able to run a snack bar during their season and extended season and whatever else they do? I mean, because it 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 sounds like, you know, again, they may be shut down. We don't want that.
And again, we ask for waivers, um, more days, um, uh, extension of period time because it's a California law, they won't grant any waivers to us. But I think based on on the the effort that we looked at in the calendar and the number of days available for for Little League operations, we can break it down in separate events. We get permitting to cover the entire period with a sufficient number of days. There may be some gaps. And we can collaborate in exactly how we fill those with prepackaged um, uh, food um, in those days that can't be covered by a full service permit.
Yeah, my my concern on prepackaged food is, and I I remember when that law went into effect for state, you know, for um, health, uh, it it kind of limits the type of ambiance that you're doing because you're you're cooking, you're providing coffee and hot chocolate. That's all service type stuff that prepackaged cookies and donuts don't meet the mark, really.
Yeah, and and I want you guys to understand, we're, a lot of these people are coming home, coming to our, the league after work, they're unable to eat, they will turn away from us and our chips and our cookies to go get a mango or a corn on the cob from the illegal vendor. And I just want to clarify, the county didn't necessarily shut us down. They've never probably been to the park, at least since the time we've been around. The only reason why we got shut down is because we were asked for our um, COVID paperwork. And I tried to do the right thing. I submitted that to station to the county after a really long time of planning it out. And then they realized, what snack bar are you guys talking about? Had that not happened, we wouldn't be in this place right now. Just saying.
Yeah, and I and I just maybe, and I may be dense on this. Their cons- Their concept there is rather you have some kind of a portable one that you can take apart and then store someplace in the city and then put it back later on versus a, a mobile one that you could just drive off and drive in?
Yes, our recommendation is that the city purchase the equipment in order to facilitate a temporary food facility on behalf of the league to replace the inoperable snack, snack bar structure. So our request and recommendation is that you authorize us to pursue the purchase of all of the equipment necessary for the league to operate that snack bar food, where they could have food preparation taking place just outside the building.
And, and we have the staff to be able to put, I mean, I know you mentioned we have limited staff to be able to put that together and take it down.
That would be incumbent upon us to work with the league. So that's why we're gonna have Environmental Health come out to the site, identify the places for storage. But we, this is, this is where our job comes into play. We're gonna have to get creative on how we achieve this. But our goal is to deliver a product that the league can use to restore the continuity of operations.
Yeah, I, I know, just, it just seems more easier to buy a portable facility that's there that you pull off and you push back in.
Okay, so let's just authorize this and move.
Okay, and I know we're, we're getting hangry here, but. So it sounds like to me that you're recommending like a concrete pad and then that would be the, the, the surface of which this temporary snack bar would be, no?
Not quite. Where we would use the existing surface just outside of the snack bar. So there is a concrete pad. I think there's a picnic table that sometimes is there and sometimes isn't. But just as if people are operating a farmer's market in a parking lot. So these are very standard operating procedures for temporary locations that are.
Get hot water.
All of that is part of what we're going to research, the requirement for them. This is all standard equipment that is available for purchase. And we have been given a list of vendors that provide it.
And how much does that cost?
That's what I'm going to come back to you with.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm, I'm willing to approve this and then come, it's gonna come back and then hopefully by then we have a good solution.
Sorry, can I just add one more thing? I just want to make clear that it's going to be the intent that the league puts up and takes down. And again, mainly Saturdays and one day during the week, during a regular season, just during a regular season, to take all the equipment down and, or up and down. Because a lot of the time, we have to go open up the, the city's restrooms for anybody using the park in the mornings. So I just want to be clear, the city is not planning to come in and help us set up this pop-up every Saturday and take it down.
No, that is not what we are recommending. We are recommending, given the parameters that we have before us, the best we can do by way of the league right now is purchase the equipment and have it available for you to use. Give you the guidance and the cooperation from the Environmental Health Department as far as the correct parameters to set that up. But this, this is not posed right now as a cooperative staff effort. And that is something that I was very clear in identifying.
I just wanted to make sure that the council knew that we would be responsible for the entire setup on a weekly basis.
Yes, if you, and, and that's the thing is this, part of this is, is this an item that the league wants to have as a cooperative effort? Is there an interest level from the league in order to, to see this come to fruition? We don't want to impose it upon you. I, I wanted to come as a staff member to offer this as a solution.
Yes, and in that regards, just know that if it's either that or nothing, we will take that.
Okay, I move to approve.
Just one more comment, but with that comes a lot of labor, I mean, right?
Yes, that's what I just wanted to get across.
Right, and so then where are we gonna store all this stuff? Are they gonna be stuffed in the snack bars? Are they gonna be a Conex box? How, and, and again, I mentioned the concrete pad because if you have a concrete pad, makes a lot easy for, easier for being compliant with health. You have hot water. I mean, there's a lot of questions here. And then, you know, breaking down, setting up, breaking down, setting up. I mean, it's tough, it's not easy.
I'll second Councilman Martinez's motion.
We want you to be successful and, and we'll be willing to help you.
And Mayor, if I could just add one thing. When, when, we just received a resource guide from Environmental Health today, which lists sellers and vendors for leasing the equipment. And our, our objective is to find the, the equipment that offers the least amount of manual labor for setup and, and takedown. So that it'll be expedited and easier for those who are going to run these operations, Hannah and company.
What was the reason against a movable snack bar? Or a, a mobile snack bar that vendors use and?
We can return with a cost comparative, but just at first.
Can we see all options for that?
Sure.
And, and the only reason, it's like, I know, for example, years back, and to no fault of anybody, we built, we bought this great movie screen. And it was a great movie screen, but then it was so cost-intensive for the people to put it up and put it down that we decided not to use it anymore and worked to something that was a lot more usable. And I'm keying, like, we have limited amount of staff to be able to do this stuff. To put together this structure is gonna take fairly skilled staff to be able to put it together, even if like, you know, Little League has the help to do it. And I know from running Little League, it's hard enough to get volunteers to do this instead of putting this up and taking it down. I, I, I just don't, I want it to make it as seamless and as easy as possible. So if we can come up with those alternatives, I would appreciate it.
Staff will come back to you with alternatives as it pertains to the Little League snack bar and what it will take to get them operational in the meantime for March. So we will bring that forward to you. I just, yes, Council.
Okay, just one, one more point on that. Could you look at the possibility of renting perhaps?
We, we will look at all those possibilities. And just so you know, I did look at, Mayor Rollins did send something over to me months and months ago. And that was something that I did look into, the purchase of a mobile facility, about 100,000. The problem with that is, is that it requires, it, it, it sounds good. It sounds really easy, maybe, maybe purchase it. Problem is, is that the location that this would go to, there's no sewer. So they would come and do the connecting and we just don't have the infrastructure in the area where it would go in order to accomplish that. But we will bring that to you in a staff report and with additional recommendations, so.
Yeah, because ultimately, whatever we all decide on, it's gonna be there for probably two or three, if we, if we do one of these great plans, it's gonna take a while anyway. So for the next two or four years, I know that if I had a child that's five, it may be, they may be 11 or 12 before we get this permanent structure in.
That, that is correct. But moving forward to staff recommendations in regards to this capital improvement update, I just want to make sure that staff understands how we're going to move forward. We're going to go back to the drawing table and construct the walking pathways. I will be coming back to you for appropriation for that project. I am currently under contract to construct the duck, the dog park along with the snack bar. So staff will be working diligently on those projects. We will be bringing back the snack bar and the sports plaza to you with additional options. Cost, we understand, is a big factor. We will come back to you with additional options. At this time, we will not be working on the multi-use fields or the playgrounds and barbecue area upgrades.
And, and those options will also include funding strategies or finance strategies.
Right.
That is correct.
Okay.
Can we make a motion to all what you just said?
Mr. Mayor, we just, we already have a motion by Councilman Martinez in a second. So unless he's gonna withdraw that motion, we need to address it.
Making a motion for staff's recommendations.
The recommendation has been articulated by Director Basua, right? Not what's on paper.
Correct, okay.
Okay, you got that? Sorry.
Thank you for clarifying. So Mayor Protem Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez? Councilmember Gama?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Arbstein.
And Mayor Rollins?
Yes.
Uh, motion passes.
Thank you.
So. Okay. Very good. So with that in mind, I would like to adjourn this meeting. It is now 6:14.
Thank you very much, thank you.